All right, welcome everybody to the June 24th City of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission meeting. Appreciate everybody being here. We will get started with the minutes. Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, we have this moment on the agenda to discuss anything before the commission you might have that's not on the agenda tonight. If you want to bring any thoughts forth to us, we'd love to hear that. All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to announcements.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to announce that we have new staff reports, and you may have noticed that our staff reports look slightly different. We are trying through our staff reports to separate the boilerplate language from actual conditions. You'll have to bear with us for a little while, there may be some glitches in that, but this is something the developers told us that they wanted to see, is what conditions do they need to meet for this particular plant, what future conditions do they need to meet, and what is simply a staff recommendation? And so we have attempted to separate our staff reports to reflect that. In addition, I believe that Vernon may have some additional things to add.
Thank you, Catherine. Good evening. To follow up on what Catherine said into the discussion we started at the last meeting is that we are meeting with the Design Professionals Group and talking about how we can bring more complete applications to you for approval, which means with minimal conditions. And then if there are a few conditions, how we can proceed after this meeting to have those corrected and approved so we can get on to the actual development stage. The first part of that was taking a look critically at the staff report to distinguish between boilerplate and actual conditions that are related specifically to a particular project. I just want to keep you up to date on that progress because inasmuch as we want support from the development community, we also want your support as we go forward to whatever solution that may be, and try to create a more thorough and efficient process. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, anything else?
No, that's all.
All right, then the next agenda item is if there are anybody that wants to present items that are not on the agenda tonight for our consideration, please come forward. All right, seeing none, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got two consent agendas tonight. We'll start with the initial consent agenda. You've got that listed in front of you, Items 7 through 21. We've also had a request to add Item 27 as a deferral to next month's meeting, so I'd like to add that to this vote as well. Does anyone want to pull items off of this consent agenda? Anybody on staff or commission? Okay, seeing none, then do I have a motion for...
Moved for approval as amended, deferring Number 27 for 30 days, I guess, to the next meeting?
Yes.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Then I'm going to turn the chair over to Roger. You can stay where you are, Roger. I'll let you take care of the secondary consent. Secondary consent item, Item Number 25. Is there a motion to accept, or does anyone want to pull that item?
Second.
You have a motion and a second to accept the consent, secondary consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Foxon carries unanimously. Thank you, Roger. All right, we will move then to Item Number 22, Resolution 2010-53, a resolution approving a concept plan for the Franklin Housing Authority, Granbury and Stoll Street Development, PUD subdivision 114, dwelling units and plus or minus 3,700 square feet of non-residential space on 8.84 acres located north of Granbury Street at 145 Strahl Street and 1236 Columbia Avenue by the City of Franklin, Tennessee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to make you aware of a revised staff report that went out for this item. We've clarified Condition Number 5 at the request of the applicant, and they're in agreement with that. We've also clarified a condition related to parking. It's really a future action item. We met with the applicants this afternoon in a pre-application meeting, and they're aware of that condition, and it's my understanding that they're in agreement with that also. Staff recommends approval of this project with conditions.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant who would like to speak to this item? If you could please come forward and just make sure you're speaking into the mic and tell us your name and where you live. We appreciate it. Or just over at the podium, if you don't mind. That way the camera can see you.
My name is Howard Lanyer. I'm a resident of Strahl Street, 140 Strahl Street, and for years we have been fighting poor drainage, water running through the yard. You can imagine how it was done a couple of months ago. Anyway, usually on rainy days, we put up a barricade to keep the water from coming through the yard. So I'm asking this board to consider redoing the drainage system. With all the building that's coming up, it's going to get worse probably, and we want to make sure that I want insurance just replace all my floors. I don't want this to happen again. And that's why, the reason why I'm here to ask this board, please consider doing something to the drainage system.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Okay, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
My name is Lyndy Arnold. I'm with Little John Engineering. We're here representing the Franklin Housing Authority and Michael's Development Corporation for this project. We have reviewed the conditions that the planning staff has included in the staff report and are in agreement with those conditions. As far as the future action in regards to the parking, we have agreed with that, that we will take that into consideration and will attempt to meet that during the development of the regulating plan and the site plan. There was one other comment, staff suggestions in regards to formal open space, and we understand that, and we will take that into consideration as well. Currently, we are over on formal open space required, so by tweaking some of the other spaces around, we can comply with that one as well. And to address the gentleman's comment, one of the comments about the off-site storm water infrastructure, we will be including detention as well as water quality, and we understand that there may be some downstream improvements to storm water as well.
Okay, great. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
My only comment was that there has been comment here about the water. That is something that everybody's already knew about.
Okay, any other comments?
Certainly, I did.
All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
Item 23, Resolution 2010-54, a resolution approving a concept plan for Through the Green, PUD subdivision Shadow Green, 264 dwelling units and 125,178 square feet plus or minus of non-residential space on 43.08 acres located along Columbia Avenue and Shadow Green Drive by the City of Franklin, Tennessee.
Mr. Chairman, staff recommends approval with conditions as revised. It's based on an updated concept plan which you have at your desk.
Okay. All right, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant that wants to speak to this item? Okay, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. My name is Skip Hebert with Hebert and Associates. We are representing the Wolf Companies on this project. We have read the staff report, agree with the conditions of approval, and respectfully ask for your approvals.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none?
I was going to say, I guess the main concern has been addressed based on that...
On the conditions.
Right, yes.
Okay, all right, seeing no other discussion, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Item 24, Boyd Mill cottages preliminary plat, 15 lots on 3.33 acres located at 410 Boyd Mill Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Wow. Okay, then that's pretty quick. Didn't get a chance to give this stuff an order here. All right, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this item? Please come forward and tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Gary Robinson. I live at 412 Boyd Mill Avenue, next door to the 410 Development.
Okay.
Can we raise that up a little bit where we can see?
Actually, no. Yeah, that part you can.
This is me, and this just about completely surrounds us. The property life on our bedroom window is 10 feet, and this is going to be a big change for the neighborhood. Most of the lots are smaller than this, but there's, over a period of time, probably years, there's going to be a lot of site prep, construction noise, and that's just part of it, and we understand that. We would hope that the city would require maybe some privacy fencing, soft noise abatement, something. My wife is disabled. That corner closest to them is her bedroom. Her quality of life is very poor. She has multiple medical conditions, and she's bedridden. And, you know, as active as that area is going to be, I just need some help ensuring that we'll still be able to just live there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Damon Rogers at 505 Boyd Mill, and my daddy bought the property that I'm living in at this time in 1966. He was also a member of the Planning Commission in the hopes of not slowing growth but controlling growth. And tonight, I'm here to ask you to control some growth on this particular property. There are many homes on Boyd Mill, as you can see, that have quite a bit of property. We have always said it's the best kept secret in Franklin, and we are sick that y'all have discovered it. We really are. We have been protected for many years, and it just kills me that we're zoned for R3. I did not realize we were zoned for R3 until Glass Lane by Mayor John Schrader was developed, and then I realized that probably we're going to have a problem in the future after he developed Class Lane, and now I can see that we are going to have a problem. I'm not against this project by any means. What I am against is the number of homes that is going into this particular property. The City of Franklin, seven years ago, I, well, it's been more than seven, nine years ago, I went before the Board of Mayor and Alderman, asking for money for a new road, which they so wonderfully allowed us to have a new road. We then asked for underground utilities, and at the time, the economy was good, and they gave us underground utilities. However, each 100% of the neighbors had to sign off that we would pay for our share of underground utilities from the street to our property, which we did. Depending on the property, running into high hundreds of dollars, up to many thousands of dollars. For instance, my property, I have three outbuildings, so it cost me about $6,000 to pay for underground utilities. I was delighted to do it because the value I felt of my home would go up in the long run. I'm not saying the value of my home is going down. However, I do feel if you put as many houses that is projected at this particular spot, the value of my home will go down. I know it's zoned R3. I'm sorry about that. I don't think I can get that changed, although I would very much like to. I don't see why we can't have one home to an acre, the maximum, two homes to an acre. My home happens to sit on about three acres. My next-door neighbor's home happens to sit on three plus acres. So does this mean you're going to see us or our children in the future coming before you, asking for another mini subdivision? I hope not. The integrity of Boyd Mill property is, the reason it is, is because we are protected by green space. We are, we have protected our neighbors. And again, I'm not discarding the fact of this property. I'm just asking you that we don't have the number of homes that are to be built on that property. In closing, I am delighted that they are keeping the home, the Orem's home, on Boyd Mill. I know it's in terrible shape, however, I've seen many a project in this area get revived with updates, and I'm delighted that they are keeping the Orem's property. But my bottom line is, I'm asking for fewer homes on this property, that whatever damage is done to the street of Boyd Mill is repaired the way it is as of today. A lot of blood, sweat, and tears, three years' worth of blocked roads went into that, and I do request that underground utilities be put into these new homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jeff Harvey. I live at 415 Boyd Mill, directly across the street from this project, and I think it greatly impacts my property value. And also, I think the number of houses going in there is way too many for that, and I think there's a unique number of trees on that piece of property, and I think the integrity ought to be maintained with the street line, that the front of that property still looks like the front of the rest of the houses and the property down that street, and not cram houses right up, you know, two houses in the front yard of that house is a little bit too close. I looked at the overlay little picture they had, and it's real deceiving. It looks like there's a lot of green space, but as I walked over that piece of property, those houses are going to be like stick your hands out and touch either side. It's quite deceiving, their layout, but putting that number of houses in there is just a little bit too much for right in there. And I think you really need to take a look at the front of that property, the size of the trees and stuff, and I think that needs to be maintained. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Peggy Gaines. I live at 503 Boyd Mill, which was one of the other properties with 03 acres. We just found out about this a couple of weeks ago when we got our letter in the mail. We have quite a few concerns. My husband, who has lived there for 10 years, is actually in New Orleans, coming in tonight at 9:00. He's not seeing any of the plans. They're not online. And actually, I'd like to ask for y'all to defer your vote to the next month, so we'll have a chance as a group to get together, talk with the people that are proposing to do this, who are very nice people, make sure they are not going to be in a bad situation with being able to fix the streets, to fix anything, underground cables, anything that needs to come in. And also concerned about property values. Our house is on the National Historic Register. We've put a ton of money into the place. It's not just our investment, it's our home. It's where our family events are, it's where we plan on our kids and grandkids coming. I mean, it's a valuable piece of property to us, not just monetarily. So we're concerned that we don't know enough, make sure that houses don't get halfway built and left, which in this economy, a lot of things like that happen to good people. And, you know, I just ask that you would give us a little more time to figure out what's going on and to talk with the people that are doing the construction.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jason Goddard. I'm here this evening representing not only the planner, but also the owner of the property. We have been working on this property for about four or five months now, working with staff, with engineering, with planning, also working with historic, meeting with several individuals on Boyd Mill Avenue, just trying to make sure that folks knew what was going on. Early on, we started working with historic in terms of how this property, or the development of this property, would affect the context of Boyd Mill Avenue. That was the primary concern from historic zoning. I'll be happy to share with you sort of the layout of the plan, if you'd like for me to do so. A lot of that was from a direct result from working with staff and historic, trying to maintain the context of the front of that property. As for this evening, we've reviewed the staff report, agree with all the conditions in the report, and respectfully request your approval. I'm here to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Any discussion? Clyde?
Having heard from what some of the concerns, I'm not hearing necessarily a concern that says I'm totally against this. I am hearing a concern that says I would like some more time to look at this and also have some more conversation with the applicant. I think that's a reasonable request myself, and I would make a motion to defer this item until our next regular scheduled planning meeting, giving the applicant and the homeowners an opportunity to spend another month together and maybe work out some of their differences. Is that...
Mr. Chairman, because this is a plat, it cannot be deferred. If it's deferred, it's considered approved.
City Hall has certain timetables for plats that have to be approved, so unless the applicant requests deferral, that's the only way a plat can be deferred.
So if the applicant thought maybe it might not pass, the applicant could ask for a deferral?
The applicant is allowed to.
Couldn't ask for the first one, you can't. We can't.
We can't. All right, I'll buy that.
Interesting. That's interesting.
That is for preliminary also. I knew the law, but I was thinking that was for final, but it's preliminary.
It doesn't differentiate between preliminary and final plat, so it's considered broadly.
All right, any other discussion?
I have a question, although I haven't been able to go back out there. You know how you drive by something all the time, but until it's, until you're looking at developing, you don't really think about that. But, and I know the setbacks there are somewhat different, but whenever I'm thinking about setbacks in that area, I mean, right in the immediate area, are they all kind of further back then? I mean, I kind of think of them as being more in line with the existing house there.
The ones across the street appear to have a similar envelope and similar size.
Andy, have this in your bag. Look at this.
The area.
She2, 2.0, you'll see a little bit of...
Wait just a minute. Oh, maybe I, no. Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. I do have, you know what, I did not see that in all the, I was looking at it.
So it varies.
I knew it varied there.
It's obviously tighter off the other side of the street.
I also have an overall area, be happy to share this with you. This shows the context of Boyd Mill, the Boyd Mill area, from 11th Avenue to Glass Lane, and this is a lot of what we worked with historic in terms of the context of Boyd Mill Avenue. If you look up near the corner of 11th and Boyd, the homes are in the range of 10 to 15 feet from the edge of the street. As you get, as you get into the sort of the heart of Boyd Mill, they vary. The house directly across the street, the owner spoke earlier, that house is one of the closest. It's approximately 25 to 30 feet. What we had worked with historic was to develop a plan that took a general consensus of where all the homes fell, not across the street, but on our side of the property, which on Boyd Mill, on the northern side, the houses are pushed further back than on south, and kind of took the general consensus. You can see where the apartments are to our east. We pulled back behind those, and if you could see on lots 1 and 2, how those are, those two lots are staggered. There's, that's done deliberately. The idea, if you look at the overall context of Boyd Mill Avenue, it's not just a straight facade plane, that everything's even all along, all along the street, so we staggered that slightly just to further emulate the staggered of the existing houses. Also, lot number 2 was pulled forward just a touch to kind of close off and enclose this portion of Boyd Mill and screen our property a little bit to the, to the east as well.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, then let's vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, if, those that oppose, please raise your hand. Okay, then... Okay, motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a reason stating the disapproval? The chairman may have to tell us, do they need to have a motion to disapprove now, or can they just state the reasons for not approving?
You just need to have a reason.
Corporately, a reason? Clyde, you want to...
I'd say the overall density and the additional traffic that it could generally could produce on that road, I think there's some issues there. I think there probably could be some issues of drainage that we have not addressed, but I certainly think that the issues of the density not matching up with the houses that's currently in that area, even though the zoning may allow it, is reason enough.
I don't, I'm next. I don't think it's at all, it might be incompatible with the rest of the neighborhood, also with the nine houses, the traffic. I just don't, I do not like it. I think it's way too much, and even though it's R3, maybe that's something we need to look at. I just don't think that, I don't like the plan.
Now, we don't have to, everyone go through.
No, no, no.
Just in general, we didn't get so specific.
Sounds like that's, well, we're agreeing.
Yeah, we did.
All right, we'll move on then. Item Number 26, amend the Franklin Land Use Plan to revise the limit lines between Sewer Hall Character Area, Special Area 3, and McEwen Character Area, Special Area 6.
Mr. Chairman, basically what we're asking for is to move the line in order to allow Simmons Ridge to be in the McEwen area. The reason for that is that the development is far more compatible with the McEwen area and that not compatible with the sewer character area, and we believe that this development, since it's already gone through conceptual, would be a benefit and is adjacent to an area that is very compatible.
Chairman, I need to recuse myself from voting on this particular issue, and for the record, I do want to point out that the applicant is Simmons Ridge LLC and that the applicant's representative is Doug Hale, and that was a typo, as I understand, but I just want to correct that for the record.
And again, we're working the glitches out in this new report, so...
Okay, thank you, Rick. All right, is there anyone in the audience other than the applicant that wants to speak on this item? Okay, is there anyone representing the applicant?
I'm Jay Franks.
Okay, you come forward, please.
I'm Jay Franks, and I'm one of the owners of the property, and we concur with staff's recommendations and appreciate y'all's consideration of this.
Okay, thank you.
And answer any questions you might have.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
This, this as approved from long ago does fit better in the new, in the proposal.
Yeah, good, okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you very much.
All right, Item Number 28, Ordinance 2010-49, to be entitled, ordinance to amend Section 3.3.4, Table 3-8, and 5.3.4 of the Franklin Zoning Ordinance, which established the site development standards for residential detached units in traditional areas and requirements for the use of transitional features.
Mr. Chairman, as you remember, Jonathan Langley did do a presentation on the lot averaging issues and did indicate that we needed to eliminate the maximum lot size and change the lot depth in order to make it possible to do subdivisions within the central Franklin area. Tonight, we come before you, asking you to approve this.
Tonight, we come before you asking you to approve this change in the zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, anyone in the audience that has an interest in this item? Okay. Not many in the audience left, so we'll go on. Uh, is there someone representing the applicant? I guess there's really not.
It's the, it's the planning department.
You are the applicant, so let's move on from there.
From the side of staff.
Let's, uh, get a motion.
Move for approval.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion?
Where did you get the 40% from?
We looked roughly, I started at 20%, it worked my way up. If you look at specific blocks, the range needs to be wide enough to accommodate, um, conformities within a block, so if you set it too low, the other side of the block would be non-conforming, so you couldn't subdivide anyways, so it needs to be large enough to encompass, um, pretty much all lot widths, or all lots, um, lot widths along that block.
Okay, any other discussion?
And also, I believe in your previous discussion, we were saying the lot width makes a more difference with the way the lot looks from the street.
Right.
As opposed to the lot depth, which was kind of left, left more alone, I guess I'll put it that way.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to have it. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, uh, our city attorney is asking that we revisit the Boyd Mill cottages and make sure that we do a, a motion for denial rather than just not approved.
After thinking about it, I'm just worried that since you've not approved it, if it could be considered that you didn't do anything with it and therefore it's approved. So just for the sake of the record's clear, I'd rather you just go ahead and make a motion to deny. That, that way we're clear that we haven't ignored it, we've actually done something with it.
Okay.
With the reason stated in the motion. It can just be one reason, but, okay, a reason.
Okay, remind me what item that is.
Number 24.
Okay, item, so item 24, um, is there anyone that wants to bring a motion for disapproval?
I move, I move that we disapprove item number 24, which is the Boyd Mill cottages site plan.
Okay, is there a second? Second.
Okay, well, for the following reasons. The, um, issues with, uh, possible drainage, drainage issues that have not been, um, identified or discussed, uh, the density of the lot, uh, possible traffic impact of the neighborhood, on the neighborhood, and also compatibility, compatibility with surrounding lots.
Okay, very good.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. Would the opposed, please raise your hand. Make that a little bit easier. Okay, we have three. You opposed?
Okay, I'm in favor of a motion, so...
Okay, we have two opposed. Did you get that, Mr. Harrison? Mr. Campbell? All right, so motion passes for disapproval. Is that good? Okay, now let's, uh, move for adjournment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.